This is gonna be a record swearing in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No doubt. That's gonna take quite a while, huh?
Yeah, well, no, we're gonna do them all at once. No one, he must have done them all at once.
Yeah, he should, he should.
Okay. I'd like to welcome you to the March 2 West Des Moines City Council Meeting. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please sign in. Five members present. All right, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of the agenda as distributed.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item two is Citizens Forum, which is a time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on any item that's not part of public hearings, which is item six or new business, item seven. All right, seeing no one, we'll move on to Mayor Council, City Manager Reports, and other entity updates. Chief Lou, we'll start with you with what's gonna be a record swearing in.
We feel really safe, though.
I'm Craig Lou, I am your fire chief and your EMS chief. Tonight caps off a very historic point in our department's history. What you see before you is all of the promotions and the new hires from the local option sales tax. That has allowed us, starting on Monday, February 24th, to fully staff Station 17 down on railroad. It's a big, big step for us. We're very happy with it. And, and to say we got lucky is an understatement. These are a great group of guys doing a great job. I was happy to promote the four in white, and I was very happy to hire the rest of them. So, what, we're gonna do this a little different tonight. I'm gonna read a little bio on the lieutenants, kinda embarrass them some, and then I'll do the whole academy class as a group. So, let's start with Ryan Gordon, since you're on that end. Ryan has held many positions within the city, haven't you? Yes. Including filling a position with each public safety department. I don't know how many of those we have out there, but he's definitely one of them. He started with the fire department in 2005 as a part-time firefighter. In 2007, he was hired full-time and then selected to fill the possession of fire medic. As you guys recall, that position at one time split time between EMS and fire, and we did away with it, me and Chief Don Remo, three years ago, two years ago? Yeah, something like that. Time flies when you're having fun. He was also a tackle medic, and has been for the last five years on the SERC team. Ryan, thank you. Paul O'Connell. Paul started in June of 2000 as a part-time firefighter, then he moved to career firefighter in 2002. He was a shipfire investigator from 2006 until recently. He's a scout leader in the city as well for the last 11 years. Thank you, Paul. Mike Stier. Mike started in the fire service in 2000 as volunteer firefighter in Carroll, Iowa. Part-time firefighter for us in 2005, and was hired in April of 2007. He was promoted to driver operator in 2016. Mike, thank you. And then last but not least, Chris Rozowski. Chris was lucky to make it here tonight. You landed where and when?
Sioux City around noon today.
Sioux City around noon with the National Guard. We didn't know if he was gonna make it, but apparently they got some back wind and were able to make it. Chris entered the fire service in 2003 in the military, serving with the 132nd Iowa Air National Guard in Des Moines. He was hired by us in 2006, promoted to driver operator in January 2019. I do know one thing about Chris, he loves hockey. I don't understand hockey myself, but that's all right. He explains it to me occasionally. So, those are the four lieutenants we promoted. We'll swear them in all at once, but next, if I could have, as I call your name, just step forward. Troy Smith. Troy. Ryan Haney. Benjamin Cox. Andrew Edens. Jason Rungy. Let's see. Jack Jensen. Kyle Thompson. Cole Nielsen. Travis Hanson. And Mitchell Jones. So, this is our academy class, our most recent academy class. They're out in their stations now. It's a very fragile class. Very brittle. Had a couple of them that got injured in academy, but that's all right. I often say I'd really get injured in training then at a real-life scenario. They started December 16th with us and ended their academy in February 14th. Academy was ran by Chief Scott McFarlane. Scott, are you here? There he is. And he was assisted by Lieutenant Corey Dolbeer. I've seen Corey here somewhere. Ah, Corey back there. Lieutenant Jeremy Nelson. Jeremy here? Jeremy back there. Matt Lehman, Lieutenant Matt Lehman, who I have not seen. They did a great job with these guys, got them through. We had, they have a great skill set, all of them. This is the first time in a long time we've actually hired a couple people that didn't have any fire experience, and they took them in nine weeks from firefighter one, firefighter two, ready to do the job. This academy performed excellent. Average score on all their tests for the nine-week academy was 93%. So, they were working, and I appreciate that. And they know that. Now they're out in the stations, they'll fill my wrath if they don't keep it up at that pace. So, guys, this, this is historic for us. It's a big deal, it's probably why half the fire department is here tonight. Let's swear them in, and then we'll do a badge pinning, all right, Mr. Mayor?
I have all of them, just come up here, and then you can face your family and friends, and I'll stand out there. And I have all your oaths of office, which I've signed. I'm gonna give them all to the chief, so you guys can each sign one and keep one, and then Ryan would like the second one, so. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, and state your name.
I, Mr. Mayor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And then will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office, and then say what you're being sworn in for. Of the office of. In the city of West Des Moines, Iowa.
The city of West Des Moines, Iowa.
Is now or hereafter required by law.
Is now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, and thank you very much. Appreciate it. You're welcome, thank you. Okay, thank you. That's a lot. Welcome, appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would have your person that you would like to pin your badge on, come on up. This is a time-honored tradition in the fire service. The pinning of the badge means you've completed the work done to wear the badge.
14. That's fun to see, stuff going up out there.
Thank you. Looks great. Don't see blood trickling down on the white shirts. It's always a good sign. All right, like I said, this is a very historic day for our department. It actually started on February 24th when we staffed the station. This is a great group of guys. I'm, I'm happy to lead them, I'm proud to lead them. We will move on, and all of this is made possible with the vision of our manager, our mayor, and our council. So, I thank them as well. I'll meet you out there, and we'll sign some stuff. Thank you.
While we're waiting for this, we're gonna need to re-sign in, because Katie's computer restarted, so we'll, we'll open that up, so you can re-sign in, please.
User error.
I think you can touch it.
We believe you.
Good thing I'm only here for like one more count.
We still need most of you to sign in. No, you're fine.
You did tell us that, didn't you?
What's that?
You did tell us that, didn't you?
Yeah, I guess it didn't register, but that's okay. That way, we're ready to go. I'm just glad it wasn't updates that take like an hour or so.
I love it how they got the pillars up.
I know, that looks great. It's fun to see.
It really is. We're gonna get to see the whole thing.
Right. It'll be great. Okay, why don't we start with city council reports, Matt?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Couple items, I just, first, I wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Harvin on your 40-under-40 designation as a honoree, so congratulations there, certainly well-deserved. Yeah. We actually had some time this morning at a development and planning meeting. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had some, I think, some pretty good and exciting projects that are happening, so certainly thank the staff for the good work that's gone in there. Some things happening, exploring Jordan Creek and Ashworth Road, the corner there that's been looked at for the last, it sounds like, 20 years, and some other things. So, I've also, last couple of weeks, spent some time learning about YJI, and I heard in advance of my opportunity to serve here about YJI, and over the last couple of weeks have really learned, come to learn of the good things that are happening at the West Des Moines Police Department and the folks that are working there. It's something really unique we have in our community, so that's all that I have at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
Nothing at this time.
Greg.
I'll be holding my first quarterly constituent meeting on Thursday, March 19th, at the West Des Moines Library Community Room on the first floor from 4:00 to 5:00. So, on Thursday, the 19th, if you wanna stop by the West Des Moines Library Community Room, then we'd be happy to see you there at 4:00. Nothing else to report.
Renee.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you so much, Councilman, I appreciate the kind words. I wanna thank Tom for his support coming to the meeting, so, that's all right, Tom, thank you. I just wanna say to Sally that it was a really neat presentation on the news about the folded flags display that we have, the 15-folded flags that are a tribute to the veterans and a tribute to the people who have fought. Wonderful, wonderful publicity about the lighted flags here right in West Des Moines as people are riding by there at night and whatnot. So, I was just sitting and happy to see it, and I was so proud, because I remember going to the opening when we were there, and to see that it's getting, shining a light on what is, I think, a beautiful display in West Des Moines. Art scene, so great job, and I think they interviewed Sally, and she did a wonderful job there as well for that, talking about that art installation. I also wanna say that I attended the West Des Moines Trustee Meeting as the liaison to the city council. I always really enjoy those meetings, because I continue to learn about the importance of that asset here in West Des Moines, the usage, and how frequently people are using the library for gathering spots, and circulation numbers are up and whatnot. So, in light of a lot that's been going on with renovation and whatnot, it continues to be a wonderful place for people to gather. I think someone sent a note that the library is probably one of the most visited spots for families over going to, what is it, Darryl, going to the movies, or what was that stat? Do you remember? Yeah, into the movies. So, people are reading books and using libraries. God, Darryl, for all the work that your staff are doing.
Tom? All right, item four is the consent agenda. Are there any items any council member wants to pull? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for all of them.
Yes, Mayor, item four N.
N?
On a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I'd move the remainder.
Second. All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item four N is approval of a settlement and release agreement with Brian and Ashley Patterson, and Matt's gonna abstain for a potential conflict of interest, so someone else wanna move that?
I would move approval, second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
All right, item five, old business, 5A amendment to city code Title VII Public Ways and Property, Chapter IX Water Supply Protection. Modify the procedures and requirements for shallow and deep wells, West Des Moines Waterworks. This is an ordinance for the second, third reading. Final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration, second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes, nor the amendment to city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by menning Title VII Public Ways and Property, Chapter IX Water Supply Protection.
Move approval, the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Move waiving the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second. All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item six, public hearings, we have a number of them tonight. Item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Pavilion Park, generally located 1600 feet east of Grand Prairie Parkway and south of I-80. Amend the comprehensive planned land use map to designate mixed-use, office, medium-density, and single-family land use, and establish the Pavilion Park Plan Unit Development initiated by Pavilion Park LC. This was continued from the February 17th city council agenda. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
January 31st, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of five yes, two were absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request.
All right, now'd be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item 6A.
Nick Caffill with Landmark Development Services, 9550 Hickman Road in Clive. Let's throw out. It shows up. Well, isn't it showing up yet? There it is. This is in the southeast. I don't know if we can zoom out a little bit, or is that me?
It's the toggle on the top, that little.
There we go. This is the southeast quadrant of, you can just see the edge of the Grand Prairie Parkway, the new interchange on I-80 West. Also, along two major corridors, EP True Parkway, so this is the Delavita Development underway by Hubble, and down in the southeast corner, where Bridgewood currently stops west of 88th Street, South 88th Street, and the Whisper Ridge Development. This is approximately 263 acres that has been planned for development, at least with this group, for the last better than a decade. We've worked a lot with staff over those years, so thanks to those for their perseverance with this group. It's now, things are getting close enough out there where it's time to move forward. So, thanks recently to the council subcommittee for giving us a couple different hours of time, working through, working with staff in them on discussing some of the land uses out here. And really what this came down to, I put this map out just to kinda help show this isn't the actual land use map, but it does show our plan for single-family residential and a big portion of that. And because a land use plan wouldn't typically show that, I wanted to lay that out, so you can see single-family lots in this eastern portion, and then the south, a lot of, about half of the southern border, a little bit better than half of that southern border. This area is generally planned for office uses. Mixed-use commercial and office in the center with a residential component that staff has asked us to place in there. Medium-density over here along the south edge of EP True in this area, and then primarily, we believe, office will happen in there, but it does have a small commercial component as well. We worked with staff and the subcommittee to look out for the neighboring areas. Single-family and a large green space through here generally handles that eastern edge. Along the southern boundary, really where the office meets Fox Creek, or the Fox Creek Neighborhood, we've developed a 100-foot buffer along those areas. And then there's also some provisions in the language, if you've read it, that talk about lighting, et cetera, when we get to a site plan stage, where we'll look at those conditions, as well as minimum lot size along the southern boundary of the single-family. It's 15,000 square feet, so sizable, they're all at the end of a cul-de-sac, so they fan out quite a bit of adjacent frontage there, which minimizes the neighbors, gets it more similar to those acreage developments that are down there, as well as how we're treating that eastern boundary along Delavita in that northeast corner, and making sure we don't have too large a building massings there, as well as keeping the commercial uses off of that boundary as well. Again, we're excited to move it forward. We do have some residential pressure to start this right now, which is great. We believe the others are just forthcoming. As soon as we get roads out there, as soon as we can get to it, we'll probably see a lot of activity. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Let me see, is there anyone else that wants to speak as a part of the public hearing? I've seen no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I know this came through the Planning and Development Council Subcommittee twice. Someone wanna make a motion, a second? We'll see if there's questions or comments.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, Your Honor, move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, questions or comments from anyone?
I'd just say that, as this came before, the, our Development and Planning Subcommittee a couple different times, I appreciated the way that Nick approached the, the project, worked with us in terms of ensuring that we had appropriate buffers along the, the south and kinda along the east there, and I know that, well, we spent a couple hours together. I know you spent a lot of additional time with Lynn and Linda, and I think that this ultimately came together really nicely.
I, I totally agree. You know, I had the opportunity to sit in the presentation and have the staff come together for the presentation.
Yeah.
So, that's the way you can do your life.
Okay, and it was, and it was five to nothing. Yep. That was a big piece of property. Now that interchange is open, there's, there's gonna be activity out there, so it's, I'm happy to see that finally we're getting some more specificity of what, what can occur out here, so I appreciate that. All right, so, the, what's on, the motion, the second, was to approve the comprehensive plan amendment, and then we'll do the ordinance.
Before, really quick, was there, at the, at the subcommittee meeting, were there any complaints or anyone from the, from the property owners back there at all that you heard from? Great.
You'll get some new constituents.
All right, war two. Oh, yeah, let's, let's move forward on this.
Okay, please vote on the comp plan update.
Five yes.
All right, the second one is the ordinance for the first reading.
Move the ordinance for the first reading.
Second. Any other questions or comments on the ordinance? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, nor the amendment to official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by menning Title IX Zoning, Chapter IX Plan Unit Development District pertaining to PUD District Regulations and Guidelines.
Move the resolution.
Second. All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item, we'll do the second and third reading of that at the next council meeting, then the ordinance will be adopted. 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider TWG Development, 520 88th Street. Amend the comprehensive planned land use map from neighborhood commercial to high-density residential, and amend the Roble Farm Plan Unit Development to allow for multifamily development initiated by RBJ LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 14th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of five yes, two were absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request.
All right, now'd be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6B. Okay, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, this was a unanimous vote of planning and zoning as well. So, we have two items, again, the first one is a resolution to approve the comp plan amendment.
Move approval of the comp plan amendment.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, now we need the ordinance for the first.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Okay, please vote. All right, please vote.
Five yes, nor the amendment to city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 1573, 1671, 1953, and 2036 pertaining to PUD District Regulations and Guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second. All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Cedar Ridge Northwest Corner of South 88th Street and Mills Civic Parkway, vacation of a public utility and storm drainage easement initiated by Chase Holdings LLC, Oakstone Homes CCRC of West Des Moines LLC, and the Lofts at 88th LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 22nd, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now'd be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6C. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the vacation request, there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval of the vacation request.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Cedar Ridge Northwest Corner of South 88th Street and Mills Civic Parkway, vacation of two water main easements initiated by Chase Holdings LLC, Oakstone Homes CCRC of West Des Moines LLC, and the Lofts on 88th Street, or 88th LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 22nd, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now'd be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6D. I've seen no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the vacation request, and actually, after the council takes action, it will go to the Waterworks Board of Trustees for their formal vote on me on March 25th as well.
Move approval.
Any questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development initiated by Willie T. LLC. This is continued from the February 3rd and February 17th city council agendas. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
January 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now'd be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item 6E. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the agreement, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Questions or comments?
I just think this is gonna be a great project and add some much-needed housing, upper-story housing in Valley Junction area, and I'm excited to see this happen, so.
Thank Scott for keep, keep working down there. Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of property to Polk County Conservation. One parcel located at the southwest corner of Southeast Pine Avenue and Southeast Ortera Avenue, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 26th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now'd be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6F. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution to approve the conveyance of property, as it noted in here, this is a remnant parcel of property as a result of the Highway 5 relocation, and really is of no value to. It really is of no value to us as a city.
I'd move approval of the resolution.
Second.
All right, questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Six G, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Raccoon River Basin Segment V Sewer Lift Station and Forest Main initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 21st, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item six G. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this also came through the Public Works, or Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Six H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2019 Channel Repair Program initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 21st, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item six H. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this came through Public Services Council Committee as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Six I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2019 Stormwater Intake Repair Program initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 21st, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item six I. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this item also came through the Public Services Council Committee.
Move to approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item seven, new business, seven A, Cedar Ridge Platt IV, 9123 and 9126 South 91st Court Subdivide, two existing lots to create a third lot for transfer of ownership and vacate overland flowage easement, public utility easement, and a portion of an electrical easement. Chase Holdings LLC and Oakstone Homes Inc. It's a resolution, approve of the vacation of easements and approval of the release of the final plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Seven B, Works Commercial Park Platt VI, Kinder Care Learning Center, 8065 South 51st Street. Approval of preliminary plat to subdivide property into two commercial lots and one street lot, and approval of site plan to construct a 12,000-square-foot childcare building. EIG 14-T development. This is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat and site plan, and there are no outstanding
Move approval.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item seven C, the 2020-21 fiscal year hotel motel tax allocation, city-initiated. This is a motion to approve the subcommittee recommendation. I know in the past, Russ has given a lot of updates as this has worked through FNA. A lot of work, a lot of time goes into this, obviously, a lot of money, and it supports a lot of, a ton of organizations. So, this is a, this is a great thing for us to be able to have the ability to do this. So, I don't know if anybody has any other questions or comments about this.
I was just curious, how many new applications did we have than what we typically, you know? I know we got the regulars to come in, but how many new ones did we have?
West Des Moines, let's see, where is it? The Robotics Club was new.
Well, they had come in the past, but...
Oh, with their new competition, sorry. Not, they requested it was new, excuse me.
Right. I think, I'm not sure we had any new ones. Martin Luther King Jr. is a new allocation. The allocation for Central Iowa Shelters and Services, which is a three-year commitment, is a new allocation, although we have allocated money to them before, I believe, in the building of that facility, and then the allocation for the two bus shelters is new as well. Other than that, I think everybody else has come in before, including this children's museum, who's been there at least once before.
Did they identify the two bus shelters that are going to be built for Dart? Because we have a lot of, a lot of locations around the city.
We have, I think we have, Dart has three shelters planned for us, and this will add another two, and what I've told Dart is we need to identify where the best location will be for these.
Okay, so that hasn't been...
It'll be based on the number of boardings, or, you know, has not been identified yet.
Okay. It'd just be helpful if we, as a city, could tell them the five locations that we think are the most important for our residents. Now, we need the...
Agreed, agreed.
...side of ship and stuff, so. Okay.
Yeah, if you guys have, you know, if there's any way to determine what the best location is, maybe in conjunction with, with Dart, that would be great. You know, they are also doing something in regards to public art in these, in these shelters. This is something that, you know, I plan on talking to the Public Arts Commission about, but I think didn't feel comfortable using the hotel motel tax money for that art project, just for the shelters themselves, but I think we will have a conversation with the Public Art Commission to determine whether or not they want to have like an art contest like they do on the Art in the Campus, or something fun, because that's the art, there is a major push to do public art in these shelters, so that they're not just ugly shelters.
Yeah, and it's a permanent structure, so we might as well have them. Good.
I think Bravo's gotten quite involved with that as well.
Bravo has contributed as well. Yes, you're right. Bravo's contributed, I think, $275,000 towards that effort, so.
I think this is great. It's a lot of work kind of putting this together, because lots of money that we have to allocate and support.
Thank you.
I also am going to personally put our money set aside to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. We have goals and initiative to be seen and felt as a welcoming city and celebrating diversity, and so it's a big shout-out at that. So, thank you for the first-time allocation.
Absolutely.
Making that happen, and I think that with that positive support, we can really make this shine a light on West Des Moines.
Well, the Human Rights Commission really, you know, inspired us and motivated us with this celebration they did this last time, and so we felt this was important to get them some additional money to really have a great celebration and celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. and the contributions that, that African-Americans have made to our community and whatnot. So, we are really excited about, yeah, this will, I'm looking forward to next year's celebration, so.
And the one other noteworthy thing is we're able to maximize our funding to the public arts program again. You know, that's a formula, and that's not always guaranteed, so it's exciting to see that there was sufficient funds in, in the program to allow that $120,000 funding. Okay, Ryan, did I get a motion?
No, not yet. Okay.
Move approval.
Second. All right, please vote.
I do want to thank, before you read anything here, Ryan, I do want to thank Councilman Hudson with, it was a lot of meetings, early morning, 7:00 AM, and having his contribution and input into the process, fresh set of eyes looking at all this. It was great having him go through all this with me, so.
And thank you for helping kind of get me acclimated to the new reality.
Yeah, appreciate your...
And thanks to the finance, the entire finance, FNA Committee, because we, they set everything up quite nicely, as they always do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Tim, and your entire team. We appreciate it.
Ryan?
Five yes.
Sorry.
Item, item eight, receive file and/or refer. We have Lisa Snyder's notice of resignation due to her conflicts with her classes on the Library Board of Trustees. Item nine, other matters, nine A legislative updates.
The call was February 21st last week, and I'll just update you briefly on House Department of Revenue filed a bill last week, the first one in a number of years, actually. It could be potentially significant impact on cities. It changes the functions of the business property tax credit, removes the multifamily residential property tax classification, and then reestablishes the disaster revitalization tax exemptions. So, we're looking into that and just kind of monitoring that right now. There hasn't been a lot of action, so I've been appreciative of that, knock on wood, but we're monitoring that closely.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or any other legislative items any council member wants to raise tonight? Okay, any other matters that any council member wants to raise before we go into our workshop?
Well, I forgot to mention during the discussion of hotel motel fund tax, I just really wanted to issue a special thank you to all of those who applied, because by applying for that hotel motel funding, it just means you are bringing extra value to West Des Moines, and so for all 15 groups, or 16 groups, however many, I really wanted to thank them because that means they're willing to put an investment in our community that actually many times can return back greater than what we invested in them. So, I really wanted to thank those groups. Because it's very meaningful that they want to make our community better, so I wanted to say thank you.
Okay, great, thank you for that. We will formally adjourn the council meeting and go into our workshop. I guess for the folks here, how I'd like to handle this is I'm going to have Tom kind of give an overview of all the alternative potential uses and timing that the staff looked at, and then I'm going to have Chief Lou do a brief presentation on the alternative that involves public safety. Then we'd like Gravitate to do a brief presentation on their thoughts about the building as well. Happy to take public comment after that, but I'm going to assign it to the Public Safety Subcommittee to actually come up with a formal recommendation for the council, so we're not going to vote on it tonight, can't vote on it. This is kind of just information we want to understand from all points of view, and then the Public Safety Council Subcommittee will take this item up and then hopefully come back with the unanimous recommendation of the council on how to proceed. So, with those kind of ground rules, I guess, Tom, I'll turn it over to you first.
Well, a little background, this, this agreement was going through the, yeah, go ahead, going through the process, originally with Gravitate through the finance administration for a renew of their contract for either a three- or five-year agreement, and before we got any further, I, it was felt by, Councilman Trevillion approached me, and I agreed with him that we need to take this, the whole council, to make sure everybody's on the same page on this moving forward, on what we need to do this building, because there's been a lot of discussion how to use 318 Fifth over the years, you know? So, some people, you know, we talked about, do we sell it? Do we, do we use it for a community center? Do we use it for a city building and so forth? So, what, what we ended up with is we went through the various options, we, you know, I offered, we offered it out to our various department heads, and Chief Lou, who is now the chief of Fire and EMS, that's a recent change in the early, I think it was January, happened, which is a big change for us, he suggested that that would be excellent headquarters for Fire and EMS, because they're, they're under one roof now, they could have a lot more synergies working together, and then, and he's going to go through this, show you the slides, to show there's a domino effect for public safety, which could involve significant savings for the taxpayers of the city of West Des Moines. So, with that said, and then the other, and then Jeff Woods is going to give a presentation on Gravitate, on...